Sean, you there? This is Mick.
Hey Mick, how's it going? Yep.
Oh, good, yeah. The form, the, um, I know GoToWebinar has updated their look.
Yes, yeah, it's a little different now.
Okay. Like I said, I have to get off at 1:00.
Okay.
But if I need to log back on like 1:30 or something, I can do that.
I think Mike is in the same boat as you, so we'll try to move this along as quickly as possible.
Perfect.
I'm here, guys.
Do we, so, John, should we put on our video feed too?
Uh, that's up to you, actually. Don't, do not believe you need to have your video on.
Okay.
Is this gonna be a real long one? I might have to be out of here by 2:30.
I am hoping that this is not a very long one.
Okay.
The longest portion of this meeting should be the procedure, and that's about it.
Okay.
Mary, Mary Ellen, it all depends on how quickly you can read.
Dang, I saw they're all, every one of them has this.
Yep.
Yeah.
I have a bottle of water with me.
A bottle of wine?
I should be wine.
Yeah, that's my water. Alright, we're just waiting for John, who I assume will be calling in.
Hi, Mike is joined. I, I do have to hop at 1:00 PM, so. Thank you.
Alright.
Can I just say will and no? We'll propose no. Skip all the wording.
Well, as a heads up, we don't have Ken either today, so. We're gonna need, uh, John probably to serve as chair, and then. I assume he might need some assistance reading, because I think he does this from his phone.
Oh yeah, he does. I mean, I've got my paper right in front of me, so I'm.
Okay, that's good. So, see, I'll.
I have to tell you, across the street, it's getting more interesting every day.
Oh, with the rank?
Yep.
Gotcha.
Now they're putting up a fence around where they're gonna be putting the. They're not generators, because it's electric, but the. Equipment, and they're putting up, it's gonna be six foot high, come on, it's not a structure.
What, what is six feet high?
The fencing around this, whatever piece of equipment they're putting in to keep the ice from melting.
Technically, not as the way it's written, but, uh, yeah, it, this one sort of bypassed COD.
Yeah, this is, this is, uh, it's, the, the posts they put in are six feet high. That are going around this, and it's gonna be a wooden thing, so it's gonna look like a structure, it's. But I guess somebody's coming over at 1:00 and meeting a couple neighbors in the park, and I'm, if my husband's home, he may go over.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Oh, John just texted me that he should be there shortly.
Okay. Come on, John.
I know. But, yes, I think if we move expeditiously, we can get through this all in an hour, it's just a matter of how quickly we can get started.
There's no minutes or anything to do this time, right?
No minutes, we're just gonna go right through, uh, the agenda items.
Okay.
Sean, this is John Darrow, I'm here.
Hey, John. You're on.
Cool.
So, John, you're our de facto chair today.
Oh, that dog. Oh, God, okay. He so owes me. You know, I'm doing this off like a microphone here, so, okay.
Yeah, he, he had to, uh, step away sort of at the last minute, so. The, uh.
Call the meeting to order?
Yes, yep, you can call the meeting to order.
And let's call the meeting to order for the City of Binghamton COD Commission, uh, September 21st, 2021. Uh, I'm John Darrow, interim chairman, and I'll ask the other commissioners to introduce themselves at this time.
Hi, Mike, Commissioner.
Could you hear that?
Mary Ellen Morrow, COD Commissioner.
Nick Clamardini, COD Commissioner.
Dan Need, COD Commissioner.
Okay, so we've got, uh, Dan, Mike, Mick, and Mary Ellen. For some reason, I wrote Mike's name twice here. If, uh, just for some background, um, if there's anybody listening, uh, to this meeting, um. You can, uh, participate and listen to the meeting via audio by dialing 1-415-655-0060, and using the access code 864-304-535. If you'd like to speak on any of the agenda items, you may call the Planning Department at 607-772-7028. Um, and we will queue calls in the order that they are received. Okay. John, we do not have any minutes for today's meeting. Um, and so I can proceed directly into the agenda items.
Wonderful.
Okay, for these items, um, I think I can sort of cut to the chase and move things along quickly. There were, out of the 10 properties that I reviewed, um, none of them appeared to possess historical significance. And further, none of them seem to meet any of the criteria for a positive determination of historical significance. Um, that being said, I think for eight of the 10, uh, we will have to do seeker for each one of them. Um, 184, 186, uh, Henry Street can be combined because they're adjacent and basically contiguous property. So, we will move into 13 Meadow, like I said, um, you, you could see the staff findings, um, can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. Um. The, we can proceed directly into, uh, seeker if everyone is comfortable with that.
I've got a question for you real quick. Who owns Meadow Street? I think it worked on the house.
Meadow Street, it's a City of Binghamton property.
Are all these City of Binghamton?
Correct.
Okay, fine, then, good, just making sure to never conflict. Okay, wonderful. Is Mary Ellen up for doing some reading?
A lot of reading, I got water.
Okay. I'll supplement it.
Do you have to do?
Oh, do we?
Yes, you have to lead agency and then type of action.
Okay, um, I make a motion to declare COD lead agency for the property at, uh, what's the address?
Oh, sorry, I mixed those up. It's type of action then lead agency, sorry.
Okay.
Uh, and it's 13 Meadow Street.
Make a motion to declare the type of action is unlisted for 13 Meadow Street, City of Binghamton, looking for a second.
Second, Mike.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous? And then I'd like to make a motion declaring COD as lead agency for 13 Meadow Street, uh, for the CCor action, need a second.
Second, Dan.
Thank you, Dan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous? Okay, now to the CCor?
Okay, here we go. Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations? No. Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land? No. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? No. Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area? No. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walkway? No. Will the proposed action in, cause an increase in the use of energy? And it fail, as if, and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? No. Will the proposed action impact existing public-private water supplies, public-private wa, wastewater treatment utilities? No. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources? No. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources, examples wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora, and fauna? No. Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? No. Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? No. I make a motion to declare a negative declaration on 13.
Sorry, go ahead. 13 Meadow Street, I second the motion.
Got it. Okay, uh, it's a roll call.
John Darrow, negative declaration.
Mary Ellen Morrow, negative.
Dan Need, negative.
Mike Clamardini, negative.
Nick Clamardini, negative.
Alright. Motion for negative declaration passes unanimously.
Yep. Alright, John, do you want me to scroll up?
You have to, because I can't see, thank you. I need a loop to see this stuff, okay. Criteria for the determination of historical significance or demolition. The commission's determination of historic significance shall be based on the following considerations, which are based on the United States Secretary of the Interior standards for historic preservation. One, if the structure is an outstanding example of a structure or memorial rep, memorial representative of its era, either past or present. Or if the structure is one of the few remaining examples of a past architectural style or combinations of styles. Or if the structure is associated with a historical person or event of significance to the city, region, state, or nation. I say no, and I move for a motion of, uh, determination of no historical significance, let's demo it. Second.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous?
Alright, okay.
Okay, one, nine to go.
15 Baltimore is the next one? Um, this is also just, uh, within both the existing and preliminary flood plan. As you can see, it's basically a property that runs immediately adjacent to the Susquehanna River. I didn't find anything that, uh, met the criteria.
Okay, so I would make a motion to declare the type of action unlisted. Second?
Second, it's Mike.
Thank you, Mike, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous? And I would make a motion to declare COD lead agents, lead agency for the determination of the CCor motion. For, Sean, I can't see the address again, I'm so sorry.
It's 15 Baltimore.
For 15 Baltimore, City of Binghamton, New York, second please.
Second, it's Mike.
Thank you, Mike, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Mary Ellen, you're up, Dan, get ready, I'm gonna call on you for a couple of these readings.
Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations? No. Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land? No. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? No. Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area? No. Will the proposed action result in the, in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walkway? No. Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy? And it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? No. Will the proposed action impact existing public-private water supplies, public-private wastewater treatment utilities? No. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources? No. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora, and fauna? No. Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? No. Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? No. I make a motion to declare a negative declaration.
I second the motion, John Darrow, and I ask for a roll call this time. I make it a negative declaration.
Mary Ellen Morrow, aye.
Uh, Dan Need, aye.
Mike Clamardini, aye.
Nick Clamardini, aye.
Being unanimous, we move for a native declaration for. Whatever the address are. 15 Baltimore, City of Binghamton. Okay, gotta scroll up, Sean.
Yep.
Okay.
John, if you wanna leave it there, you can, because I have a paper in front of me.
Oh, you do? Okay.
Yeah.
Cool.
I'll just, as I go, I'll just jump to that immediately, okay?
Cool. Criteria for determination of historical significance for demolition. The commission's determination of historic significance shall be based on the following considerations, which are based on the United States Secretary of the Interior standards for historic preservation. If the structure is an outstanding example of a structure or memorial representative of its era, either past or present. Or if the structure is one of the few remaining examples of a past architectural style or combination of styles. Or if the structure is associated with a historical person or event of significance to the city, region, state, or nation. No, it is not, and I make a motion for determination of no historical significance, let's demo it, John Darrow.
I'll second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous?
Okay, moving along. We are at, uh, 14, let me just make sure I'm sticking to the agenda here, yep, 14 College Street. And again, this one was, uh, unfortunate, because I was kind of hoping that there might be potential for rehabbing this as part of a city program, but. Uh, it's deteriorated beyond repair, particularly on the inside, and the foundation is failing, so. Um, that is about it, and I will zoom in here. And Mary Ellen and John, you can take it away.
May I make a motion to declare it as an unlisted action for, uh, the College Street property? Second?
Second, it's Mike.
Thank you, Mike, all in favor?
Aye.
And then I make a motion, unanimous, I make a motion to declare COD the lead agency for the, uh, College Street before us. Second?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulation? No. Will the proposed action result in a change in the use of, or use of land? No. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? No. Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area? No. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walkway? No. Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy? And it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? No. Will the proposed action impact existing public-private water supplies, public-private wastewater treatment utilities? No. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources? No. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora, and fauna? No. Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? No. So, will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? No. I make a motion to declare a negative declaration for 14 College.
I second the motion. All in, um, calling, asking for a roll call, John Darrow acknowledging a native declaration.
Mary Ellen Morrow.
Ladies first.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, gentlemen, up to the.
Mike Clamardini, aye.
Dan Need, aye.
Nick Clamardini, aye.
Alright, unanimous, we have a negative declaration. Okay, ready? Sean, you ready?
Yep.
Okay. The commission's, uh, excuse me, criteria for determination of historical significance for demolition. The commission's determination of historic significance shall be based on the following considerations, which are based on the United States Secretary of the Interior standards for historic preservation. If the structure is an outstanding example of a structure or memorial representative of its era, either past or present. Or if the structure is one of the few remaining examples of a past architectural style or combination of styles. Or if the structure is associated with a historical person or event of significance to the city, region, state, or nation. No, it is not, I make a motion for no historical significance, let's demo it. Looking for a second.
I'll second that.
Dan.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, knock her down.
Alright, moving right along. Making sure, 40 double day. What was that?
What's she know, that was college, we're still finishing college.
Yeah, we're on 40 double day.
Okay.
Alright. Forty double day, uh, again, nothing, uh, for this, for this property. Didn't have anything, so let me roll down.
Okay, John.
Okay, uh, motion declared is an unlisted motion. Motion declared unlisted, second?
Second.
Somebody?
Mike, Mike got it.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All in favor? Unanimous? And I make a motion to name COD and lead agency, uh, concerning the double day property.
Second.
Alright, Mary Ellen got it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous? Okay.
Alright. Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or, or zoning regulations? No. Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity use of land? No. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? No. Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area? No. Will the proposed action result in adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walkway? No. Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy? And it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? No. Will the proposed action impact existing public-private water supplies, public-private wastewater treatment utilities? No. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources? No. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources, example wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora, and fauna? No. Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? No. Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? No. I make a motion to declare a negative declaration before we double day.
Second.
The motion.
Mike, got it?
Okay. This is, uh. Roll call, John Darrow, negative declaration.
Mary Ellen Morrow, aye.
Mike Clamardini, aye.
Dan Need, aye.
Nick Clamardini, aye.
Passes unanimously, it is a negative declaration. Okay. Criteria for the determination of historical significance for demolition. The commission's determination of historic significance shall be based on the following considerations, which are based on the United States Secretary of the Interior standards for historic preservation. If the structure is outstanding example of a structure or memorial representative of its era, either past or present. Or if the structure is one of the few remaining examples of a past architectural style or combinations of styles. Or if the structure is associated, associated with a historical person or event of significance to the city, region, state, or nation. I determine that it is not, I make a motion for a determination of non-historical significance. Second?
I'll second it, Dan.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous, knock her down.
Alright. Uh, 43 Schubert, just making sure that's right. Oh, actually, nope, let's jump to 184, 186, I opened it in the wrong order. Uh, where did I put that? 184. 186, there we go. So, this is a combo. Um. Which we can do for seeker, but they should be, the determinations of, uh, historical significance should be separate. Former, for both of these properties, they were, uh, the primary structures on both are gone. Uh, there are the garage and storage structures, uh, that were affiliated with both. One was a grocery store, and the other was a, um, like an alcohol distribution center. Um, and so both of those, the uses have long since. And so both of those, the uses have long since vanished and we're left with the remnants of those buildings.
Make a motion to declare the type of action unlisted for the two adjoining properties on Henry Street, second?
So you want to name those, one eighty-four Henry Street and one eighty-six Henry Street?
One eighty-four Henry Street and one eighty-six Henry Street as unlisted action. Need a second?
Second, Spike.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, and I make a motion for determining that Caugh is the lead agency for one eighty-four and one eighty-six Henry Street respectively. Second?
Second, Mike.
Thank you, Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Sean, do we have to do, we have to read this twice, right? One for one eighty-four and one for one eighty-six?
No, you can read it once for both properties. The other, the portion that John does has to be done separately for both.
Oh, boy.
Okay. Well, I got the longer one, John. Okay, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations? No. Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land? No. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? No. Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area? No. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walkway? No. Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? No. Will the proposed action impact existing public-private water supplies, public-private wastewater treatment utilities? No. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources? No. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora, and fauna? No. Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? No. Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? No. Therefore, I make a motion to declare one eighty-eight, declare a negative declaration for one eighty-four and one eighty-six Henry Street.
I second it, and I also make a motion for a negative declaration. Roll call. John Darrow, I'm sorry.
Mary Ellen, aye.
Mike Catchy, aye.
Dan Need, aye.
Mick Lumardini, aye.
Unanimous, so, criteria for determination of historic significance for demolition with regard to one eighty-four Henry Street, the commission's determination of historic significance shall be based on the following considerations, which are based on the United States Secretary of the Interior Standards for Historic Preservation. If the structure is an outstanding example of a structure or memorial representative of its era, either past or present, or if the structure is one of the few remaining examples of a past architectural style or combinations of styles, or if the structure is associated with a historical person or event of significance to the city, region, state, or nation, by my eye, these things had fallen down by themselves. I make a motion for a determination of no historical significance. Second, please.
Second, Mike.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, so, for one eighty-six Henry Street, criteria for determination of historical significance for demolition, the commission's determination of historic significance shall be based on the following considerations, which are based on the United States Secretary of the Interior Standards for Historic Preservation. If the structure is an outstanding example of a structure or memorial representative of its era, either past, present, either past or present, or if the structure is one of the few remaining examples of a past architectural style or combinations of style, or if the structure is associated with a historical person or event of significance to the city, region, state, or nation, I make a motion of no historical significance. Let's tear it down. Looking for a second?
Second, Dan.
Thank you, Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, knock down one eighty-six Henry.
Okay. And that was one eighty-six. Mary was, here. Okay, same thing for eighty-two Mary, kind of sad. Definitely was like a nicer, you know, clean Anne at one point in time, not anymore. And I'll bring it to here. There you go.
Okay, I'll make a motion for the action to be unlisted. Calling for a second, or for eighty-two Mary Street?
Mary, Mary Street, yep.
Eighty-two Mary Street, looking for a second?
Second, Mike.
Thanks, Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous, and I make a motion to declare Caugh the lead agency with regard to eighty-two Mary Street. Looking for a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Okay, you ready?
You can stuff this off to Dan anytime you want, Mary Ellen. He needs some practice.
I can help you if you need it. Just don't know if it'll be stylish, you know?
Yeah. Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulation? No. Will the proposed action result in a change in the use of intensity of use of land? No. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? No. Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area? No. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walkway? No. Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? No. Will the proposed action impact existing public-private water supplies, public-private wastewater treatment utilities? No. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources? No. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources, example, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora, and fauna? No. Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? No. Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? No. I make a motion to declare a negative declaration for eighty-two Mary Street.
I second the motion. John Darrow also making a negative declaration. Looking for a roll call, please.
Aye.
Thank you.
Mike Catchy, yes.
Dan Need, aye.
Mick Lumardini, aye.
Unanimous? So, we'll move on with regard to this Mary Street?
Yep.
Okay, eighty-two Mary Street, criteria for determination of historical significance for demolition, the commission's determination of historic significance shall be based on the following considerations, which are based on the United States Secretary of the Interior Standards for Historic Preservation. If the structure is an outstanding example of a structure or memorial representative of its era, either past or present, or if the structure is one of the few remaining examples of a past architectural style or combination of styles, or if the structure is associated with a historical person or event of significance to the city, region, state, or nation, I make a motion of no historical significance ready to Main Street, Mary Street. Let's knock it down. Looking for a second?
Second, Dan.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous, aye, unanimous. Next?
Next up, we've got, now we're going to get to it eventually, forty-nine Colfax, which is this one. And again, found nothing for this property.
Shall I start, Sean?
You may.
Okay, I make a motion to declare the action for forty-nine Colfax is unlisted. Need a second?
Second, Mike.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, and I make a motion for Caugh to be the lead agency for forty-nine Colfax. Second, please.
Second, Mike.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Mary Ellen?
Okay, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations? No. Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land? No. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? No. Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area? No. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walkway? No. Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? No. Will the proposed action impact existing public-private water supplies, public-private wastewater treatment utilities? No. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources? No. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources, example, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora, and fauna? No. Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? No. Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? No. I make a motion to declare a negative declaration for forty-nine Colfax.
I second the motion for negative declaration for forty-nine Colfax. John Darrow asking for a roll call.
Aye.
Mike Catchy, aye.
Lost you.
Did we lose some people here?
Yeah, I think I got lost. I'm trying to get, oh, wait a minute. I guess I'm joining there. Okay, I'm back. Can you hear me, Sean?
Yep.
John, Mick Lumardini, aye.
And I think that everybody, Mike, did you say aye? Sorry.
I did, yeah.
Okay, so.
Oh, yeah, Dan, that's who I think.
Yep, aye.
Aye, okay.
Okay, so unanimous, I guess I missed a couple seconds there for some reason.
I lost it too.
Um. So the motion for forty-nine Colfax, negative declaration passed, and now it's my turn, right? See what happens, you miss a couple seconds, it throws the whole mojo off, geez. Okay, criteria with regard to forty-nine Colfax, City of Binghamton, criteria for determination of historical significance for demolition, the commission's determination of historic significance shall be based on the following considerations, which are based on the United States Secretary of the Interior Standards for Historic Preservation. If the structure is an outstanding example of a structure or memorial representative of its era, either past or present, or if the structure is one of the few remaining examples of a past architectural style or combination of styles, or if the structure is associated with a historical person or event of significance to the city, region, state, or nation, I did make a determination that it is of no historical significance and make a motion to demolish it. John Darrow. All need a second?
Second it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous.
All right, moving right along, we've got, I believe it, one eighty-eight Oak. And again, now nothing for this property.
Okay, I make a motion for one eighty-eight Oak Street to be an unlisted action. Looking for a second?
Aye.
Thank you, Mary Ellen. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous, and I make a motion that Caugh be the lead agency for one eighty-eight Oak Street for determination. Second?
Aye, second, Mick.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? Okay, Mary Ellen?
Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use or zoning regulations? No. Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land? No. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? No. Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area? No. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walkway? No. Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? No. Will the proposed action impact existing public-private water supply, public-private wastewater treatment facilities? No. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources? No. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources, example, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora, and fauna? No. Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? No. Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? No. Therefore, I make a motion to declare a negative declaration for one eighty-eight Oak Street.
I second the motion of a negative declaration. This is John Darrow, and I call for a roll call.
Aye.
State your name.
Mike Catchy.
Mary Ellen.
Thank you, okay.
Dan Need, aye.
Mick Lumardini, aye.
Got it. Okay, unanimous, it passes for a negative declaration. Excuse me. Okay, with regard to one eighty-eight Oak Street, City of Binghamton, the criteria for determination of historical significance for demolition, the commission's determination of historic significance shall be based on the following considerations, which are based on the United States Secretary of the Interior Standards for Historic Preservation. If the structure is an outstanding example of a structure or memorial representative of its era, either past or present, or if the structure is one of the few remaining examples of a past architectural style or combination of styles, or if the structure is associated with a historical person or event of significance to the city, region, state, or nation, I can't find any, I make a motion to determine no historical significance for one eighty-eight Oak Street. Knock her down. Second, please.
I'll second, Dan.
Thank you, Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, unanimous.
I think John's.
Yeah, I almost wanted to say huzzah.
Huzzah.
Rousing roll call there. All right, for forty-three Schubert, this is the last item. This is a, again, the primary structure on the property is gone. It was torn down a few years ago, and all that's left is the garage that served the primary residential dwelling, and that is why it is before us today, and I did not find anything significant about the garage on its own.
Okay, was it forty-three Schubert, Sean?
Correct.
Okay, I make a motion to declare the action is unlisted for forty-three Schubert Street, City of Binghamton. Second, please?
Second, Mike.
Thank you, Mike. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous, and I make a motion for Caugh to be determined as the lead agency for forty-three Schubert Street. Second?
Second.
Second, Mike.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Mary Ellen?
Okay, last one. Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations? No. Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land? No. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? No. Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area? No. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walkway? No. Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available? reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? No. Will the proposed action impact existing public-private water supplies, public-private wastewater treatment utilities? No. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources? No. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources, example wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora, and fauna? No. Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? No. Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? No. I make a motion to declare a negative declaration for forty-three Schubert Street.
This is John Darrow. I second the motion for a negative declaration for forty-three Schubert and ask for a roll call.
Mary Ellen Morrow, aye.
Mike Cansy, aye.
Dan Need, aye.
Nick Lumardini, aye.
It is a negative declaration. Okay. For the property of forty-three Schubert Street. The criteria for determination of historical significance for demolition. The commission's determination of historic significance shall be based on the following considerations which are based on the United States Secretary of the Interior's standards for historic preservation. If the structure is an outstanding example of a structure or memorial representative of its era, either past or present, or if the structure is one of the few remaining examples of a past architectural style or combination of styles, or if the structure is associated with a historical person or event of significance to the city, region, state, or nation, having fallen on, I make a motion of no historical significance for the property at forty-three Schubert Street. Let's knock it down. Second, please.
Second, Dan.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous?
All right. So that is the end of our agenda, uh, maybe just in, in the event that the public, that, you know, the public was listening, just give them a minute again if you wish to speak. Um, you can call six oh seven 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 two seven zero two eight about any of these items. We'll give them another minute, John, just in the event.
Absolutely. And I'm gonna just say something in the interim while we're waiting for public response. Sean, again, if we can get some interior pictures for the demos, more important for private people, but it would help. You know, I really don't like carrying quality housing down. In this case, you know, I certainly don't think that there was any here, but it'd be nice. And another thing, there is a beautiful statue of George Washington in, uh, Vesto Hills, uh, Memorial Cemetery. We are initiating a restoration project for the statue. Uh, we've been granted a twenty-five thousand dollar grant to start the project from the Grand Lodge of New York, and, uh, just keeping you informed, it's not a city thing, but it's, it's very cool, and, um, it'll be really nice when we finish it.